At this time, I'd like to call the Martin County Board of Commissioners meeting along with the Board of Education special meeting to order at this time.
And we'll call the Martin County Board of Education meeting together for our May 6th meeting. And Commissioner Biggs, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? All rise, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Baker.
Father God, thank you so much for this opportunity that we have to come together and just discuss the funding and the pledge for our schools. Father, we're grateful that you would be with us, make me keep in mind that this is for future generations of our county. And may you be pleased that you played great in your songs now.
Amen.
At this time, Commissions, we need a motion to approve the agenda. A motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye, thank you.
Board members, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Aye.
Have a motion and a second to approve the agenda for the meeting. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Thank you.
At this time, we will turn the meeting over to Dr. White.
Good evening, County Commissioners, Board of Education, all of our special guests this evening. Thank you so much for being here tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to bring our two boards together for this very important evening. We are partners, and we are here in the best interest of the education of the children in Martin County, and I appreciate this opportunity to bring our budget needs to you for the 24-25 school year. On this slide, you are going to see, this is page two of your budget, and then if you go to page three, you're going to see my budget letter that I created for you this evening. Again, I'm very proud to serve as the Superintendent of Martin County Schools. This is an amazing community, and I feel like this has been one of the best years for Martin County Schools, and I'm going to share some of that information with you tonight. And that's in large part due to your support. You supporting Martin County Schools is the reason that we have been able to do so many of the things that I'm going to share with you tonight, like our new early college, our innovative middle school, and so many other new opportunities such as robotics and Odyssey of the Mind, and the list goes on and on. So I want to start by saying thank you. Thank you for supporting Martin County Schools. Next, I want us to look at several key areas of cost increase this year that I feel is important for you to understand before we move into the actual budget presentation. The expenses for our school system have increased collectively, which have caused a strain on our budget for next year, particularly as we are striving to move out of ESER. As you are aware, this will, this current school year, 23-24, is the last year of ESER funding, and it all must be spent by the end of this fiscal year. Therefore, as we're planning for next year, we need to plan for life without ESER funding. And we're planning for this at a time where our budget will be decreasing as our costs are increasing. First, I want us to consider our personnel cost. And this is an overview, but as we dig into the budget tonight, I'm going to give you the itemized list where we're going to look at everything individually, but I wanted to kind of give you an overview of where we are to begin the presentation. First of all, with our personnel costs, we do anticipate a 3% salary increase. So the state has mandated a 3% salary increase for our employees, which is great. Our employees deserve a raise, they need a raise. However, this also puts a strain on the budget because not everyone is paid out of state funding. In fact, quite a few of our employees are paid locally. Therefore, we have to foot the bill for the 3% salary increase. Along with that, hospitalization costs are also increasing. They're increasing by $538 per employee, and we employ about 500 people, so this will be a huge cost for our school system. In addition, our insurance premiums are slated to increase by about 3%. So that's one area we're going to look at tonight. As we get to the itemized budget, you're going to see those costs reflected in that budget. I also want us tonight to start to dream big, to set the tone for our future, our future partnership, the future of the children in Martin County. One of the most significant expenses for any school district, and ours, is personnel. In order to attract and retain the absolute best teachers and staff, we have to offer competitive salaries and benefits. Unfortunately, due to our current budget constraints, it is difficult to keep up with the rising cost of living and healthcare and our supplement. I'm currently doing a study throughout the region to look at where Martin County Schools falls in that supplement range. We currently offer a supplement of $1,400 per certified employee. However, that is one of the lowest supplements in the region. For example, our neighboring school system actually offers 6% of the salary as a supplement. So this can make thousands of dollars difference when someone is trying to decide between Martin County Schools and being employed by a neighboring school system. So tonight, I'm not asking for this increase, but what I am asking for us is to start to plan for the future and think about how in the future we can increase the supplement for our employees to make sure that we are competitive with the surrounding counties. I want us to recruit and maintain the best, and in order to do that, the supplement is a critical piece. In addition, we do not currently offer non-certified staff a supplement, and I would like for Martin County Schools to offer all staff a supplement. Our non-certified staff are critical employees. We cannot do what we do and giving our children the best every single day without them. And so as we plan for the future and dream for the future, I want us also to begin thinking about how we can offer our non-certified staff a supplement as well. Point two to consider as we look at the budget this evening is our facility maintenance and renovations. Our school buildings are aging. I'm going to share this with you later, but we have an average age of 51 years. So when you look at the average age of all of our buildings, they're 51 years old. Many are in need of repairs and renovations in order to make sure that we're giving our children the best learning experience and learning environment possible. We have some leaky roofs, I'm going to share that with you tonight. I'm going to share some pictures with you so that you see exactly what some of the schools are looking like. The cooling systems, as you know, those have a lifespan, we are exceeding those lifespans, and we just need to look at the overall infrastructure of our building maintenance that can have a very big impact on student learning and safety and of course, on our budget. According to the National Center for Education Statistics, after 40 years, a school building begins to decline rapidly, and after 60 years, many schools are abandoned. So we do need to look at increasing funding for facility maintenance and renovations, which would allow us to address these critical needs and provide our students with modern, well-maintained facilities. Again, I want us to dream for the future. I'm not asking for this tonight, but I'm dreaming and planning for the future versus just showing up and asking for this. I want to plant a seed tonight. The increased cost of maintaining Riverside High School, and I'm going to share those specific numbers with you, but it's exponential. And at this point, it warrants for us to consider the building of a new high school. The track has been condemned, and we can no longer hold sanctioned meats. The auditorium has torn, ripped outdated carpet, we need updated lighting as well as new seating. Within the main building, we have smaller classroom sizes, the roof has major leaks, and the school has ADA compliance issues. We would like for the county to consider moving forward with a construction project once we finish the payment of Riverside Middle School, and I believe we have two years left on that payment. So again, I'm not asking for this tonight, I'm asking us to dream, to plan, to set a vision for the future so that we're working towards that vision together. The third area, student support services. Many of our students are facing challenges outside the classroom that impact their academic success. We need additional funding to expand student support services, including counseling, mental health, academic intervention programs. One thing we have done this year is we added a counselor and a social worker in every school. That was not the case last school year. We were actually sharing counselors in some of our schools, and that is a necessity. Post-COVID, we have seen an increase in mental health needs in our school system, and we want to make sure that we're not just giving kids what we can offer, we want to give kids the best, and we want to make sure that we have staffing within our schools that are offering the absolute best. And so this year, we did restore full-time counselors and/or social workers in each of our school buildings. Several other key consideration items are transportation costs. DPI has a new funding formula, and we were actually cut by more than $100,000 this year. These cuts, of course, are being absorbed by our local budget, which creates an additional financial burden. Our workshop expenses also will be increasing. We have been fortunate that we have been able to absorb those in ESER. However, you will see, I'm going to talk to you a little bit later, we have used our ESER funding this year to buy all new curriculum for our teachers. When I arrived last May, one of the primary things they asked for was new resources. They wanted new, up-to-date, standards-aligned resources, and they wanted a voice in that. And so this year, we've been going through the resource adoption process, and we are going to have new reading textbooks next year with a comprehensive reading program that is the whole picture of what we should be giving our children, from the online format to the actual books in their hand. We're also doing the same thing with math, science, and social studies. We are working to adopt those curriculums, and that's a big piece of how we're using the rest of our ESER funding this year. With that is going to come professional development. We cannot give teachers new resources and not train them on how to use those resources. And so because ESER will be leaving us this year, you will see an increase in our requests for those workshop expenses because we want to make sure that our staff receives the training and professional development to appropriately use the new resources that they are being given in order for our children to show that maximum growth. And then beyond that, our maintenance increases. As you all know from just going to the grocery store, the cost of living has increased, and we are feeling that in our maintenance department. The increased cost of supplies and parts have led to increased maintenance expenses, which you're going to see tonight. So I just wanted to give you an overview of the big points that you're going to see before we delve into the itemized budgetary items. And again, I want to say thank you. Martin County Schools and the Martin County Commissioners are partners. We are here to work together to ensure that we give our children the absolute best. As we move beyond COVID and the budget it brought to Martin County Schools, we are asking for your increased support to ensure that our children and our community are offered the best. Moving along, on the next slide, the next page in your packet, this, I wanted to give a comprehensive overview of where we are with the budget in Martin County Schools. I wanted to give you the numbers and be as transparent with you as I could. So our total operating budget this year is $52,624,083. This total includes our ESER funding. So when you take out our ESER funding, and I'm going to show you that amount on the next slide, our total operating budget for this year would be $42,754,878. Now, the reason I'm showing it with and without ESER is because next year, we will not have ESER. ESER goes away, and so I think it's important for us to attack the budget through two lenses. I want you to see what we have, but I also want you to see what we're going to have once we move beyond ESER. Also, when you look at our payroll, we're currently looking at a payroll of $32,526,484. Our monthly payroll is $2,710,540. And our salaries are the biggest part of what we use our budget for in Martin County Schools. 62% of our budget equals salaries with ESER. So when you look at that total, 52 million, 62% of that 52 million is people's salary. Now, when you take that out, which we will not have ESER next year, so I wanted to show you both pictures, 76% of our budget is actually paid in salaries. And then the rest of that budget, of course, you've got to remember that we do have additional fixed costs such as utilities, insurance, and I'm going to share those with you tonight as well. You can see our local current expense budget, 7.2 million. Our capital outlay budget was 1.4 million. Now, this is not only the money that was given to us when you're looking at the current expense by the county commissioners, this also includes what we allocated in fund balance. So currently, right now, today, our fund balance is about $4.2 million. We have been able to increase our fund balance due to ESER. Our allocated fund balance is $897,319, and our unencumbered fund balance is 3.3 million. Again, we have about 500 employees and 2,700 students, and we are one of the largest employers in Martin County. Right at 2,700. And I'm actually going to share the numbers with you by school tonight, so you'll have those as well. On the next slide, I wanted to give you a fund balance analysis. So the state does not have a required school fund balance. It does not say you must have 10%, you must have 8%. However, it does give us some best practice guidelines. Best practice is about 8%. Currently, our fund balance is about 6.3% of the total budget. Currently, we have $897,319 encumbered for the 23-24 school year, and again, our total unencumbered balance is around 3.3 million. In the next slide, I wanted to show you an ESER analysis. So ESER I was spent as of June 30th, '22. ESER II was spent as of December 31st, 2023, and ESER III expires in fiscal year '24. So this will be the last year of all ESER spending. As we move along, what I want to do now is give you an overview of each school. As we partner together to give our children the best school experience, that includes the actual physical buildings. So I wanted to give you a comprehensive overview of each building and where we are with that building. So here we have EJ Hayes Elementary School. It is the oldest school currently in operation, and this is something that we are going to need to look at in the coming years. We currently have an enrollment at EJ Hayes of 3rd, 4th, and 5th graders with an ADM of 263 students. The current capacity of that school is 467 students, and again, you can see the acreage, the square foot, and of course, that date of construction was 1952. So this is definitely a building that we are looking at, that we are starting to plan for. As I came on last year and began to look at the five-year plans, this building needed to be considered through the last three five-year plans. So this is an emergent need for Martin County Schools and something that we will be bringing back to you. Jamesville Elementary, it is a K-5 school. Actually, it is a pre-K-5 school because we do have a pre-K program there as well. Our current enrollment there is 221 students and a capacity of 343 students, and then you can also see the square footage, and our date of construction there was 1974. Rogers Elementary, on the next slide, is a K-5 school. We do not have a pre-K program at Rogers. It is a K-5 school. Current enrollment of 212 students and a capacity of 293 students. The date of construction there was 1962. Again, with Rogers also, this needs to be on our radar as we are looking at a game plan for the future. Of course, we know that we can't do all of these things at one time, but if we could create together a three-year plan, a five-year plan, a 10-year plan for what we're going to attack with our facilities, that's what I want to build a vision for tonight. South Creek Elementary School. South Creek Elementary School is a pre-K-5 school. It has a current enrollment of 333 students and a capacity of 362 students. The date of construction was 2000. Williamson Primary, on your next slide, it houses grades pre-K 2. We do have a pre-K program at Williamson Primary. Current enrollment there is 370 students, and our capacity is, according to the architectural plans, was 343 students, but there were some additions that were made that increased that capacity. So these capacities come from our architectural plans, and the new additions actually increased the capacity at the school. Our date of construction there, original date, was 1975. And you're going to see, as we're going through, we have a lot of schools that were built in the 70s, several around '74 and '75, and that's because the state gave grants during that time, very big construction grants, and that's why so many of our schools were built in the 70s because we were able to get that funding. Also, as we're mentioning that, want to say that we are offering some similar grants right now, not physically right now, in May, but later this year, the state will offer, I anticipate, construction grants again, probably around the month of November. And that is something that I would like to talk to the county commission about, the possibility of seeking some of these construction grants so that when we are ready to go to that next step, we've been vigilant in trying to secure the funding to contribute as much as we can to be ready to build our next project, and also that will contribute to what the county commission would have to offer. Riverside Middle School houses grades 6, 7, and 8. We have a current enrollment of 336 students and a capacity of 596 students. The school was built in 2012. South Creek Middle School housed grades 6 through 12, currently houses grades 6, 7, and 8. The current enrollment of our middle school is 170 middle school students, 248 South Creek High School students. The capacity is 753 students for South Creek Middle High School building, and it was originally built in 1975. Again, another one of those schools that was built in the 70s. Riverside High School houses grades 9 through 12, has a current enrollment of 477 students, a capacity of 871 students, and was built in 1974. This is a school that I'm going to bring you over $2 million in capital requests for tonight. So something that we really need to look at is the future of Riverside High School. Martin Innovative Early College, where we are right now, our innovative campus. We have it housing grades 9 through 12 because we do offer all of our CTE classes here. We have a current enrollment, and I'm very proud of this. Last year at this time, we had less than 100 students on this campus. This year, first semester, we had 560 students a day on this campus. Our second semester count is actually a little higher than that, but between 550 and 600 students a day on this campus utilizing our CTE pathways and what we have to offer here, and we've been able to expand those, and I'm going to share that with you later as well. This was built in 1974, but of course, had the major renovation in 2021. And of course, those are our school facilities. Our additional facilities include our bus garage and maintenance, which was built in 2003, and it's 21 years old. Our central office building was built in 1936, and it is 88 years old. However, we are looking to move our central office into the end of the innovation campus. Part of the capital projects that we requested last year was to update this, our very historic central office, and so that is currently under construction. Our maintenance department is doing the renovation itself in order to save cost, and we are hoping that we will be ready to move into that sometime during the month of July. We're getting close. We still need to put down the flooring, however, the major pieces, the wiring, electricity, of course, the rooms, the doors were hung this week. So we're getting very close and hoping to be able to move in in July, and we would love to bring you guys and give you a tour once we're able to do that. All right. So in our next slide, you'll see that I wanted to show you the average age of our facilities. The average age of the facilities, when you look at all of those facilities that I just shared and simply take the average, the average age of our facilities is 51 years. The average year built is 1976, and again, so many of our schools were built during the 70s due to those large construction grants, and that's something that has come back around in the last year or so in public education. So I hope that that's something that we can take advantage of as we're moving forward because there was quite a bit of money awarded this year, and we are anticipating next year as well. Moving along. Our next slide is when we're going to get into the budget needs of our school system. So here, we're going to dig into the capital outlay, and we're going to dig into our local expense, and we're going to go section by section and look at the itemized request. First, we'll start with capital outlay. Let's go to the capital outlay, Mr. Bullock. Yes, perfect. So in our capital outlay, we have divided this by school, and then at the bottom, you will see the request for transportation, for maintenance, for several other key areas. But first, at the top, we'll start with Williamson Primary. One thing we need to look at, I will say, one thing our schools desperately needed was playgrounds, so I wanted to share tonight that we have used ESER funding to purchase several playgrounds for our elementary schools. We even had an elementary school that did not have a playground, and that was unacceptable. So we've been working with the school improvement teams, we've been working with the principals, and we did use some of our ESER funding to make sure that all of our children get the best experience. Play is a part of elementary learning, and so that was just a celebration that I wanted to share with you tonight, that each of our schools are going to get updated playgrounds, which were desperately needed in actually several of our buildings. One thing we need to do at Williamson Primary, of course, this school was built in the 70s, so we do need to look at the hall flooring. There were some roof leaks in that building, and we need to replace the carpet with tile. We're finding that, of course, tile is much more durable than the carpet, and so as we're replacing, we're trying to do that with tile. There were some playground canopies requested to ensure that the children have shade, and this is a requirement for pre-K. And then there were some furniture needs as well as needs for the media center. So their total needs requested was $22,000. Now again, the way this works is the schools actually get together with their school improvement team, and they request the needs for their building. And then we work with the principals to make sure that we have a comprehensive list and everything that the school will need to be successful for next year. At EJ Hayes, this is one of our oldest buildings. We are, again, needing to replace the tile throughout. We are, again, needing to replace the tile throughout the building. We have 10 classrooms that we need to get the carpet replaced with tile. We need new furniture, and this is a need throughout the school system. Our furniture is very outdated. When you come into the Innovation Campus and you see the beautiful furniture that's here, we want every child to have this experience. This is an amazing experience, and this is something, no, we can't do it all at once, but we can work towards creating this level of experience for all of our children. And so when you see the furniture, that's what we're working towards, our teachers and our staff having the same quality of furniture throughout the district. In South Creek Elementary, we need a new sign out front. The base boarding throughout the building needs to be replaced, exterior lights, the parking lot, and that is a need that you're going to see across several of the schools as well. We, several of our parking lots need to be repaved, and in fact, we've got some schools that actually do not have paved bus parking lots, which creates a huge hardship when it's raining, when the children are trying to get on the bus for our drivers. So that is something that we've got to work towards. We also need a new P A system in the school. We need to paint throughout that building. That building was built in 2000, so it is time to refresh the school. When children walk in, we want it to, we want you to feel welcome. We want you to feel the environment, and so several of our schools need to be updated with new paint throughout the building. We do have a leak there that we need to address, some landscaping needs, the cafeteria treads, that's the steps as you're going in need to be replaced, the stage curtain motors also need to be replaced, as well as the floor in the band room. In addition, they are requesting some more out, outdoor athletic equipment. So when you look at South Creek Elementary School, you have $650,300. Moving on to Jamesville Elementary. Jamesville Elementary, we do need to replace some light poles beside the, beside the pre-K location. We also need to close the eaves of the building because we have birds that are continuously trying to roost in the building, and which you know wreaks havoc on that infrastructure. We need to update our furniture in the school, and so each school, you'll see, is, is asking for that, and they're trying to chunk those requests. We know we can't get it all at once, but we need to start working towards some updated furniture. Some of these things that we have are, are very outdated and, and in need of replacement. Also, the cafeteria tables, they're asking to replace those, folding chairs and a rack. They actually use their cafeteria as a multipurpose room, and so every time they have parent events, they have to put out the chairs and take them back up, and they're in need of some folding chairs and a rack for those to go on, as well as the baseboards throughout that school need to be replaced as well, for a total of $75,815. At South Creek Middle School, this is one of the schools, if you've ridden by recently, we do need to repave that parking lot. That parking lot is in dire need of repair. Several gra, cracks with grass coming through that we're working hard to keep down, but it is in a dire state. They need a new door to the main entrance. They have several broken windows and window frames that also need to be replaced. They need new signage throughout the building. Their bathrooms are the original bathrooms, and those need to be updated. They need new fixtures, and they just need to be renovated. The ceiling grids and tiles need to be replaced in that building, and several of our buildings have this need. Landscaping, again, to paint the interior of the building. This is something that hasn't been done in a while for several of our schools, and we need to update that. The parking lot fixtures as well need to be updated. They want to add some seating for their students outside, including picnic tables, and we have had a major focus this year on providing interventions for students. So if a student doesn't understand what they've been taught, then what are we going to do about it? And what we're doing about it is small group intervention. So we pull students in small groups, and so these kidney tables are shaped like a kidney so that students sit around the table, the teacher sits in the middle, and the teacher's able to support those students. And so they're asking for those tables to use in their small group intervention and remediation exercises. They also need some benches, as well as some outdoor equipment for the middle school. South Creek High School, because they are merged currently with Riverside High School, those, those requests were all contained within the middle school because it is the same building. For Rogers Elementary, again, this is our second oldest building, built in 1962. They need some updated casters for their media bookcases. Their bathrooms are the original bathrooms in the school, and it is definitely time for those to be renovated and upgraded. They need to replace their windows and their frames. If you've rode by the school, you can actually see from the outside that that's something that we need to look at and replace. They're also asking for those small group intervention tables, as well as updated furniture, book bins, and a new P A system. Total of $514,111.28. Riverside High School, I'm going to pause on Riverside High School. I'm going to come back to that at the end. I want to show you pictures to go with Riverside High School. So let's look at Riverside Middle School. Riverside Middle School is asking for updated cafeteria tables. Currently, they have the long tables, but what they would like to do is actually offer the four-person tables. This promotes collaboration, conversation, just trying to build that, that middle school environment. So many of our students struggle with communication. They want that communication to be on a cellphone, and so we want to promote that environment where we are having conversation and not being on a technology device. Riverside Middle would like to paint their office, as well as their classrooms. This is one, this is our newest school other than the renovated IC campus. However, it was built in 2012, and so it is time to make sure that we're staying on top of the painting and updating the furniture. They are looking at adding a weight room for the middle school there, so that was a piece. You see, it's, it's blank there because we did not obtain, the, the teacher was not able to get all the quotes in, in time, and we are looking at some community donations for that, but I left that in here because I wanted you to know that that's something that we were looking at adding at our middle school level as we're working to build our athletic program. We are, we need to replace the digital sign. It's my understanding that that sign has been an issue for many, many years, honestly, since originally built. Soon after, there were issues with the sign. It could be such a valuable piece of advertisement for the school system, keeping parents on, on board. We really need to get the digital sign in front of the school up and going. In addition, they need landscaping, a washer and dryer to support athletics, as well as our self-contained EC classroom. We would also like to add vape detectors in those schools, as well as updated furniture. So their total request would be $122,583.98. Moving along, there are some of these safety projects as well of transportation, but you're going to see those in current expense, not capital outlay. Our maintenance needs, you can see here, we're in need of a storage building, pressure washer, we need a new maintenance vehicle, lighting upgrades, ADA improvements. Countywide, you heard me mention ADA for Riverside High School. We really want to stay on top of this and make sure we're giving all of our students the absolute best, so that is a definite need. Looking at our grounds and site restoration, we want to make sure that when you ride by our schools, you see excellence. And so we're really looking at how we are maintaining our grounds, and that's something that we really are going to be working hard to up our game. It's good, but we want it to be best. We're also looking at heat and air replacements countywide. Again, as I mentioned earlier, we have several units that are at their life expectancy, so we are going to need to be replacing some of those. We have replaced a lot, that's one of the uses of ESSR money, but as that runs out, we still have continued needs in that area. We do need additional school-based countywide maintenance equip, equipment, telecenter maintenance. This is something I would like for the commissioners to consider. Years ago, when the lease was signed with Economic Development, we are responsible for many things for the telecenter. So basically, we're using school system funding to support economic development, and we want to be a support for economic development, but we really cannot afford for that to continuously come out of our budget. So we would like for you to, to sponsor the cost of economic development being in our building. They are great partners for us. We have told Economic Development, and we tell the world, and we're going to share this later, we are ready to build the education that businesses need to come to Martin County. If you need it, we will build it. We are ready to craft a CTE pathway, to educate our children, to be the coding, the coders that you need for your internet-based or app development business. Whatever you're looking to do, we're ready to build the workforce, so we appreciate economic development, but we just need that support because the funding for that shouldn't come from the school system. We also have several roof repairs countywide that maintenance is asking for, funding for. Our innovation, Innovation Campus, because we do have such an increased number of students, we do have increased need for new furniture, additional furniture, if you will. This isn't furniture to replace what we have. This is additional furniture because, like I mentioned earlier, we have almost 600 students a day here. Last year, we were serving less than 100 students a day here. So because we're offering more, new classes, additional pathways, doing a great job with counseling our students one-on-one, we do need more furniture here. And then, of course, the additional things for the auditorium, we need to replace the HVAC, the seating, and the carpet. Technology, this year, for the first time in Martin County schools' history, we did go one-to-one. We were not one-to-one until this school year. And so what we're, again, planning for the future, developing that vision, we have to have replacement plans. This year, we gave every student a device. We are now one-to-one. Every teacher has a device, every student has a device. We need to make sure we've got replacement plans for those, and so that is what this technology cost is. It's our workspace licensing that allows us to do what we do with the computers, and then we need a plan for replacement for our Chromebooks for teachers. This is on our replacement cost for this year. For child nutrition, you'll see that there are several needs for new convection ovens, and then under the, as well as a holding cabinet for food. We did add lunch to the Innovation Campus this year, so for the first time. If you, as you walked in the building, if you look to the left, we've added a serving line there. Because of the increased number of students, we needed to serve lunch here, and so we partnered with Riverside High School to serve, they cooked the lunch there, and we are able to serve it here, and so we do need an additional heated holding cabinet. In the other category, you're going to see that we need roof, the IT department at the telecenter. Again, we are responsible for their maintenance, so we're asking for your support with that. And then our insurance costs have gone up as well, and these are the deductibles there, as well as the required contingency. So you can see that grand total of $6,622,682.71. But that includes Riverside High School. So I want us to go back, and I want to share Riverside High School separately, because I don't want to just tell you the need, I want to show you the need. So when looking at Riverside High School, there's several key, key issues. First of all, the bleachers in the gym. One section of those bleachers is not usable. It is permanently against the wall, the mechanisms have been removed, you cannot use that section of bleachers. The bleachers that we do have are in desperate need of repair. We do have them inspected every year, but we are at a point where we have to look towards getting those replaced. If you've been to it, and I'm going to share some pictures with you. Scroll down here. These are some pieces of the, of the bleachers. You can see, I think this is the section that has been permanently dismantled. You can see the mechanisms behind how old and outdated it is. Here's the key piece I want to show you. This is space between the steps of the bleachers. This should be connected, but Doug, can you scroll up? Oh, sorry, down. All the way. Keep going. Keep going. Keep going. One more? Right here. So that is actually space between the bleachers that you walk on and sit on. That should be connected. You can see, again, space there. It's just time to have them updated. Okay, let's scroll back to the top. So that is the need, that's the $250,000, and that will replace the gym bleachers. Get them all usable again, get everything, because when we do have a great crowd for basketball, we want everybody to be able to sit comfortably. A roof seal, we are asking for $281,972. The roof at Riverside High School links, leaks exponentially. Scroll down. So you see that trash can is permanently in the hallway because this is the roof beside it. All right, so when you look up at Riverside High School, that's what you see because the ceiling tiles have been permanently removed, because when it rains, the water pours through the roof. So there's no need to put the ceiling tiles back because every time it rains, the water is going to pour through. Scroll down, and so I just wanted to show you, there's an example of the ceiling in a different location, the ceiling tile, when it rains, that's what it looks like, and this is an example. So the other picture was an up close with the roof. This is the area between the gym and where the concession stand is, and again, when it rains, the water just pours through, so we have to keep trashcans there, and that's, this is just one area. The other place where you saw the trashcan, scroll down, Doug. I'm sorry, up. Right, and up again. Up, up, sorry, down. I'm trying to get to the one that shows the picture of the door. Oh, sorry, scroll over. There it is, it's right beside it. Yes. In this one, this is actually, you see the buses out, this is actually a different place in the school. This is facing the bus lot, so I wanted to, the leaks are throughout Riverside High School. The two I've just shown you are on opposite ends of the building, and the other trashcan that I showed you was actually in the middle of the main hall. So we do have an issue there. Yes, sir. Is that a what? Is it a metal roof? I do not, is it a metal roof, Mr. Edwards? Yes. And we are looking at some seals for that roof and what we can do to repair it. Do you want to speak to that, Mr. Edwards? And that is what we're requesting, is that roof seal, and that would be $281,972. Next up, we want to look at the auditorium seating and carpet. We are very blessed in Martin County to have such a wonderful facility. This auditorium is absolutely amazing. Nobody in northeastern North Carolina has an auditorium this great, but it is in desperate need of repair. You can see in these pictures, you see the tape going down there that's covering up, tears in the carpet. You also see just the outdated nature of the furniture, the color of the furniture. And again, as you scroll down, you'll see pictures of the steps, just the wear and tear, many rips in the carpet. We have a wonderful community theater, Martin County Community Players, who uses this and to sold-out crowds. You can see there, another piece of tape on the floor in the background towards the back of that photo. And we want to show Martin County's best when we have these peoples coming, people coming into our community. I'm proud to say that we are adding an innovative middle school that I'm going to tell you about later, and part of that is going to be a theater program that runs middle to high school. So we'll have a 612 theater program that will also be using this facility. And so, again, it is in need of some, some pretty big repairs. And so we are asking for the auditorium seating and carpet to be replaced, and that's at a cost of $550,000. Our track is condemned. We cannot hold sanctioned meats on our track. These are pictures, and we are proud to say, this is just, this is not just Martin County schools. When you go out there, almost any evening, if the weather's nice, you're going to see our community on this track. You're going to see kids. You're going to see kids, you're going to see adults, you're going to see Martin County using this track, and we want it, again, to be the best. We want them to have the best, and we want our children to be able to have sanctioned meats right here in Martin County. The facility at large, as far as the space, is fabulous, but this is beyond repair by many, many years. And so, we are asking for those, that resurfacing, that is at a quote of $800,000. In addition, we're asking, again, for that classroom, school furniture. We spoke about that earlier. Almost every school is asking for that. Riverside High School does have a big need, their stuff is very outdated. Our bus parking lot is something else I wanted to show you. Here, you can see pictures of the Riverside High School bus lot. It's not even paved. This creates a big hardship when it rains. I mean, you can see this, these pictures were taken after it rains. Just getting the children to the bus is a challenge because of how muddy it gets, the big potholes. We really need this to be paved, both for our drivers and our children. And that cost quote is $108,485. In addition to that, we want to paint Riverside High School. That school has not been painted in many, many, many years, so we want to update that, give it a fresh coat of paint. We want to do some new landscaping, and we need to replace the fire alarm system in that school. That system is in need of repair. There have been several times this year where we have had to, to go in and fix it, and we're at a point where we need to replace that fire alarm system to ensure that we are properly protected and have what we need in place, and that would be at a cost of $100,000. So, you can see that, in total, that brings Riverside High School's needs to $2,445,457. And the reason I wanted to save them for last is because I understand that that is a huge request, but I felt it important to show you the request, to show you the pictures. I would also invite you to tour. I would love to take you through the building and let you see what it looks like, because it's one thing to, to read it on paper, but I wanted you to see and know that we don't take this request lightly. We know that that is a large amount of money, but we wanted you to know that it is a desperate need for Riverside High School. As we're moving forward, that concludes our capital outlay request. We're now going to move into our current expense request. So, as we are looking at our current expense fund request, there are several things I want to bring your attention to. Again, reminding you from that opening letter, we do anticipate a 3% salary increase by the state. We have, the state does not pay for all of our employees, of course. As in any school system, many employees are locally funded, so therefore, we have to fund that 3% increase. The health insurance, again, we are expecting an increase of $538 per employee, so you're going to see that cost filtered throughout where salaries are involved, and so I just wanted to bring your attention back to that again. There was an ever-so-slight decrease by .96% in retirement this year. That's noted at the top as well. In addition, as we're scrolling through, you're also going to see that, that retirement increase was from 25.02 to 24.04, which is a .96 decrease, but we will see a 3% increase across all insurance premiums, increased transportation cost due to the cuts from the DPI form, funding formula, and increased needs in professional developments to the, due to the loss of ESER, as well as the increased maintenance cost, just because our cost of just purchasing materials has gone up. So, in the first section, you'll see the, this, this section is labeled our regular instructional, and here, let me pull up my version. You're going to see the first thing there is three teachers' salaries. So, we have been absorbing these in ESER in the past several years, but we have to put these back into our budget for next year. You're also going to see, the next line is our staff supplement. That's something that I mentioned earlier, as we're planning for the future, we do want to work to, to increase that, but that's currently $1,400 per certified employee. We do not currently offer a non-certified supplement, but that's something I want us to work towards and set a vision for, for the future. And then, the other costs you see embedded there are the social security, retirement, hospitalization, all of those things that we've already mentioned that accompany those salaries. And then, you can also see some teacher, the teacher recruitment expense. This is when we are going out and we are recruiting people to come to Martin County Schools, we're going to job fairs, and we are making this their place to work. In addition, in this section, you'll have all of the district travel. So, the total for that regular instructional, $608,174. Moving along, you'll see the central office admin cost. So, you're going to have, this is for all of your supervisors, coordinators, directors, every, all of those people, as well as staff supplements, their retirement, their hospitalization cost. Now, you see that total is $641,285. That is, does represent an increase of 3.88% due to the increased cost that we are incurring. And I didn't mention in our regular instructional, that also is an increase there because of the, the increases that we are incurring. Moving along to our non-instructional support, the first item here for the $450,000, that is for our substitute pay. We use a system, ESS, to actually support our substitutes. You've seen many school systems in crisis online because they cannot hire subs when they have teacher vacancies. We have right at a 99% fill rate for our substitute system. We contract this through an outside agency, which means that our teachers are not having to cover during planning blocks because we couldn't find a sub, which means they're not getting a planner during the day. I mean, if you've watched the news, you've seen that crisis throughout the country, and we actually are blessed with a 99% fill rate. It really changes the dynamic within the building when you don't have to worry about securing those subs. Next up, again, you're going to see cost for the non-instructional support, salaries, this is for our data managers, our treasurers, our secretaries, and then all of those costs that go along with that. And then, of course, you see an increase because we're occurring that, incurring that increase as well. Moving along to school building administration, you're going to see some staff supplements here for our school building administrators. You're also going to see that an AP intern, so when you see this ECU Leadership Academy, this is something we're doing to grow our own. We are partnering with East Carolina University in a program called Pirate Leadership Academy, and we are growing our own. So, these folks, we're supporting them in their educational journey, and they're going to come back and be leaders in Martin County Schools. Some of this is grant-funded, but we have to match some of that as well. But this is a vision for the future. Again, you're going to see more supplements, staff salaries, retirement, hospitalization, and you see that total there for our building administrators. There is an instructional support line item here. This is where we are making all of our records digital, all of our transcripts, student records. When people call, we need those to be digital so that we can send them, to them upon request, where, again, we're trying to move into the 21st century, and so, this is something that has been needed here. It is a work in progress, and this is the company that we are working with to make sure that all of our records are no longer paper, but are digital. Moving along, you're going to see the longevity, that's this next line item of the $50,000. Those are for the locally funded portions of longevity. Again, the state pays longevity, but for those employees that we locally fund, we have to foot the bill for that. So, that is that section. Under the next section, and we're on vocational at this point, so the first section of vocational, you are going to see several, this is, again, staff salaries here that we are paying along with their retirement. The workshop expense, we were able to take out, that was a CTE workshop expense that they were able to cover in-house. This teacher assistants are funded by the state funding source, but again, in the future, I want us working towards giving them a non-certified supplement as well, not requested this year, just planting seeds for a vision for the future. You see, next up in the staff development section, our principal of the year awards, our, our workshop expense. Now, here, that is a big one. The, the reason you see that go from $42,000 to $100,000 is what we talked about earlier with ESER. So, we are losing that ESER cushion. We used ESER for much of our professional development, and we will not have that. So, we had to build that back in, especially, as I mentioned earlier, we're buying new curriculum, and we have to make sure that our staff is appropriately trained in the new curriculum. Moving along to children with special needs, you can see, yes, the state does provide funding, but they don't cover everything that we need. And you see, one of the huge costs is contracted services. So, there are certain contracted services that we are required to provide for our children with special needs that are not, we do not receive enough funding from the state for this, and that's why you see that $515,000 line item there. That is for specific special needs contracted services. Moving on, you see our charter school payment, and we, we are working hard to reduce this. We want the community to know that we want our children. We want our children in Martin County Schools, and we stand ready to offer the best. If it's broken, we will fix it, and if we don't have it, we will build it. We want our kids in Martin County Schools. Moving along, you're going to see, I mentioned earlier in capital outlay that I didn't have the transportation cost there. That's because you're seeing them here in current expense. So, here are the transportation costs that we are going to need to, that we will be incurring for next year, including Senovia, which is our transportation system. It allows our bus drivers to clock in and out. There are tablets on the bus that they use as well for route information. And then, of course, we were cut in transportation, so we have to replace that money with local cost. Moving along, our instructional supplies and equipment, you can see those requested items, as well as our JROTC program. This is a pivotal instrumental program for Martin County Schools, something that gives our children so much value. We just had a child just a month ago receive a full scholarship as he signed his papers to enter the armed forces, and that is a locally funded program. Moving right along, going down to transportation local, you're going to see that this, again, is for transportation costs that we cannot cover from our state fund O56. This is how we shuttle children from the Innovation Campus to Riverside High School. So, we can't use our state funding particularly for that shuttle bus, it's a midday shuttle, and this is how we fund that locally. Moving along at the bottom, I won't go through all of these, but you're going to see our general operations, everything from our drug testing when we hire new employees, to our liability insurance, our property insurance, our online accounting system, our activity bus maintenance, copier cost, all of those things that it takes to run a school system that are not, parts of other categories are listed here. Moving along, you'll see our athletic cost as far as our salaries, our supplements, our other extracurricular supplements and cost. And then, at the bottom, you see our maintenance cost. As we mentioned, we have a 3% increase to all utilities, and so, you're going to see that outlined. Last year, in electricity and utilities, we're only at 708,000. This year, we're at 729,000. Last year, we were at 78,000 in natural gas, this year, we're at 81,000. Last year, at 146 in water and sewer, this year, at 150,000. So, again, those 3% increases across so many areas are impacting our overall budget. Scrolling down, you'll see our salaries for our maintenance department. Of course, those are paid locally, and that is the biggest ticket item in this section. So, a grand total of our current expense budget, $8,225,494 and 67 cents. So, if we go back to the presentation, to sum up what we talked about tonight in that next slide, I wanted to review where we were last year and then look at what we're requesting for this year. So, last year, the 23-24 budget analysis, you'll see that in capital, we requested We received $635,000. So, that was a net loss of $4,848,402.25. Under our current expense, last year, we requested $8,936,056. We received $6,120,000 at a net loss of $2,816,056. This year, in the next slide, what we are requesting for the 24-25 school year, again, considering the increased costs, you kept hearing 3% raise in insurance, 3% raise in salaries, 3% raise in fixed cost. So, our 24-25 capital request will be $6,622,682.71. Our current expense request will be $8,225,494.67. Now, as we're making these requests, I think it's important that we show you, as our partners in education, what are we doing with this money? So, what did Martin County Schools do with the money that was given last year? What's new in Martin County Schools? What are we doing to give our children the absolute best? Well, first of all, this year, we created, for the first time in Martin County Schools' history, an early college. Last year at graduation, we had one student graduate with a two-year degree. This year, at this time, as I stand here today, we have 126 children enrolled in our early college, and beginning in the next few years, we are going to be, begin graduating whole classes of students with that two-year degree or certificate of their choice. We've partnered with Martin Community College and very thankful for all that they're doing to support our early college. We have more course options and more pathways than anybody else in northeastern North Carolina, and I'd be glad to sit down and share those with each of you. We've really upped our game in Martin County Schools. Again, we've purchased a new curriculum that is aligned with North Carolina standards and supported this curriculum with professional development. So, we are going to make sure that our teachers get the best so that our students get the best, and our teachers are the ones that are going through the adoption process, vetting the curriculum resources, and selecting what they feel will be best in the classroom. What else are we doing? Well, we started an innovative middle school that will open in fall of this year, STEAM-focused, science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. It will be a program housed at Riverside Middle School, so not a separate school, but a program that will be run separately inside of Riverside Middle School. We have 72 students in this program, many of who would not have remained in Martin County Schools, but this program is something you cannot say no to. It is absolutely amazing. We are, we're offering robotics, we are offering theater, we are offering coding. We have a STEM lab at the middle school. You walk in and you see them putting casts on legs, you see them flying drones, you see them actually plumbing sinks. It's absolutely amazing. We also are partnering with East Carolina University. We actually just met with them a few weeks ago. We'll be signing an, a formal MOU with ECU to support our innovative middle school. We've expanded our career and technical education pathways to offer more than anybody else in northeastern North Carolina. Celebrating success, we're a one-to-one district for the first time in Martin County Schools' history. We have had what I like to call an arts revival. We've added theater arts, we're going to be producing our own plays. Our bands this year, our high school band received straight superiors in their rating. Our middle school band did an excellent job. It was some of the, the first time that some of the South Creek students had ever had an opportunity to perform on stage, and we hosted the contest right here in Martin County Schools for the entire northeast region of the state. For the first time in over a decade, we had not one but two high school students selected for governor school. Most districts get one, we actually got two. We have added the career exploration lab that I mentioned at the innovative middle school. Please come see it. I would love to take you in this classroom and show you these children creating their own apps, coding and flying drones, wiring electricity, plumbing sinks, you name it, we probably have it, including hydroponics and biotechnology. We've added advanced classes across the district, so students who need more are grouped together, and they're getting more. And students who need exceptional children services are also getting more. By adding the leveled classes, we're able to give everybody what they need. We've added four high- We've added four high school credit options in eighth grade. So, you can get Math One in eighth grade, English One, Earth Environmental Science, and World History. We're adding the science next year. This year, we've offered three. Next year, we're offering four. So, advanced students who need more can actually go to high school as almost a sophomore with a full semester under their belt. Not for everybody, but we want something for everybody. We wanna make sure that we have what every student needs. We've expanded career and technical education to the point, like I've said, we're offering more than anybody in the region, including internships. If you missed our career fair, it was absolutely amazing. We have some super awesome partners. If you came out back, they were actually laying bricks and teaching students masonry. Dom Tar was here. Universities were here. It's going on and on. We've added an alternative learning program. So, students that need more behaviorally, socially, emotionally, are getting it. We've added day treatment in the alternative learning program. So, students who need more are getting it. Student success, we started the first-ever Odyssey of the Mind team this year. Odyssey of the Mind is a problem-solving competition. We took five teams to the, to the regional competition. Four advanced to the state level. We've never even had this in our district before. And in two weeks, one of those teams is going to Iowa. And they're gonna represent Martin County Schools and Martin County on the world stage. They will be competing with students from across the world. They actually finished second in the entire state. They've never done this before in this problem-solving competition. And two weeks, will represent us in Iowa as they compete against people from across the world. Our robotics team, we never had high school robotics before, built our own robot from scratch, partnered with a robotics company out of Greenville. They gave us tremendous support. We went to the competition, first year we've ever done this. Not really expecting much at all. But at the end of the competition, our students were rewarded with a standing ovation as their name was called, and they won the Rookie of the Year Award. So, the, the group was so impressed with them. Amazing things for our children. We've had amazing growth at FFA and Ag Education, several first-place winners. Our Battle of the Books teams, middle and high school, won second place in the region. Only lost to Pitt County, which is, if you know Pitt County, it's a little bit bigger than Martin County. So, we're very proud to say that our students are thriving. And I want it, I want you to know that this is thanks to your support. Martin offers more. Martin offers more isn't just something we say. It's something Martin County Schools does every single day. More face-to-face instruction by more certified teachers. More hands-on learning for every student. An innovative early college, offering the associate's degree or certificate of your choice. Esteem innovative middle school that offers a collaborative, whole-child experience. More career and technical education opportunities, creating workforce-ready citizens. Stellar arts and athletic programs that focus on the whole student. We offer an unmatched educational experience.
Martin offers more!
And so, this commercial actually has been airing on WITN. It's also been streaming over the last several months to the point that several people have actually called them to say, "We want what Martin County Schools has. That is amazing." And our goal with this is to show the world what Martin County has to offer. It's not just about Martin County Schools. Martin County Schools generates economic development for this whole community. And we want the world to know that if you've got a business and you're looking for a home, this is the place to put it because this school system is ready to build your workforce. We want the world to know, if you're a teacher and you're looking for the best place to work, Martin County Schools is the place you wanna come work because we are on the rise and we have amazing things to offer. So, as we conclude tonight, we want you to know that Mar, Martin offers more. It's not just something that we say. It's something that we're doing every single day. And it's in large part to your support. So, we want to say thank you. And that concludes my presentation. At this time, I will be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Chair, I don't have a question, I have a statement. I just wanna say a fantastic presentation. Can y'all hear me?
It's a great presentation. I really, uh, I've learned some things about the school system that I was not aware of. I've been very much involved with state competition from FFA to all the different... I actually, I think I went to the FFA conference probably every year in the last, uh, five or six years. And they're very steep competition. And when you start talking about robotics and you start talking about some of the things that this school system, this county is successful in, I just wanna say hats off to the school board, hats off to the superintendent, and most of all, to those staff and the students. I'm very impressed. And I know to move forward, it takes innovation. It takes forward-thinking. It takes a great vision. And most of all, it takes money. So, I, I really like where you're going. I like your vision, the school board. I like your vision, along with your superintendent. And I'll try to do what I can to support our students in this journey. And we have a long ways to go. And I was glad to see that we moved into early college. We missed out on, well, we didn't, you can't miss out on anything. There were some years in the past that I felt that we should have been part of this. And, um, and it makes a big difference to the parents when their kids can go to college and they don't have to pay all that money out the first two years. Makes a big difference. So, I say, I applaud you. I support you. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Smith.
Any other comments from any of the commissioners? I'd like to say thank you. Appreciate what you're doing, everything.
Thank you so much. And we did want to give you a gift tonight. This week is actually Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week. And so, we're doing special things to celebrate our staff all week, but we wanna celebrate you too. Because without your partnership, we would not be here. So, we did give a little, a gift that we're gonna be sharing with our staff later this week. I also wanted to share it with you. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Do any of the school board members have any comments they'd like to add to the scene?
If there are no...
And this is directly to the school board. And I've been on this board for many years. And if I compare our school boards across the state, I wouldn't want to be in partner with any other school board across the state other than the school board we have right now. And I'm looking at some of the members on the school board. I've been on this school board for quite some time. And I have too, on the county commissioner board. And we've always been able to come to terms on whatever issues that are facing us. And I just wanna say to all of you, thank you so very much for your partnership. Thank you so much for, over the years, dealing with different issues. We were able to work together. And I pray we'll continue to do that.
If there are no other comments, I will entertain the motion to adjourn. We have the motion and a second, and a second. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
All right, it need a motion to adjourn. Have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Meeting's adjourned.